Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's six o'clock and I'd like to call to order this regular commission meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, September the first. And, and welcome everybody. Again, we're meeting via Zoom to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, and we appreciate everybody's consideration of that. Again, if you are trying to tune in and, and listen and watch, the public and press may access this meeting simultaneously online at www dot maconbib dot U S or www dot facebook dot com. And there's a link there that'll take you to YouTube where we're streaming live on, on YouTube. So with that having been said, and we're officially now called to order, I think it most appropriate that we start our meeting with an invocation and Commissioner Allen has agreed to lead us in, give us an invocation. Commissioner Allen, let me call on you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll close your eyes, please. To God in heaven, you know our struggles here on earth. From the beginning of time was Cain and Abel, brothers are still killing brothers today. Yes, Lord, your works in the Bible stands true always as stated. God, you created us, but we need help. Please show those in charge how to handle this deadly virus. Those elected that they serve the pub people, the public needs, but Lord, we should serve you first. Lord, please watch over this new mayor and commissioners coming into office, not just in Macon, but in our entire nation. Watch over those that are still in office. I ask this in your name. You are the King of Kings. Amen and amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Next, this is a special week coming up. We want to obviously wish everybody a wonderful Labor Day, but as we start September, we're all aware of September 11th and the significance of September the 11th. A proclamation has been prepared and with your permission and without objection, I'd like to read that proclamation at this point. Whereas on September the 11th, 2001, 19 years ago, four passenger jets were hijacked and crashed into the Twin Towers, the Pentagon and a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, killing nearly 3,000 innocent people. And whereas that day, police and firefighters bravely dashed into burning buildings to save the lives of those trapped inside, knowing that they may face certain death. And whereas of the 2,977 people who died that day in New York City, over 412 were public safety personnel. And whereas it is estimated that 2.86 million people serve in public safety, meaning less than 1% of our population protects the 340 million Americans, plus visitors, students and workers that come to America. And whereas firefighters, EMS and police have become our city and nation's first responders responding to over 25 million 911 calls. And whereas the people of Macon Bibb County set aside Sunday, September the 6th, 2020, to recognize, honor and applaud the approximately 700 men and women of public safety who risked their lives every day and every night to protect us and keep us safe. And whereas in light of the recent adverse publicity against people involved in public safety, it is a good and noble thing for us to affirm and applaud the men and women serving in public safety across America. Now therefore, I Robert A. B. Rickett do hereby proclaim Sunday, September the 6th, 2020, as Public Safety Sunday in Macon Bibb County, and I urge all citizens to thank and show gratitude to all public, public safety workers for all that they do and have done as they sacrifice their own safety and well-being to keep us safe. And witness whereof, I have here unto, set my hand and cause the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed this first day of September 2020. I'm going to provide that. Exactly right. Exactly right. We, and, and we don't usually do this, but all in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Then the proclamation is unanimously approved and, and we'll, we'll issue that accordingly. The next thing I want to do is to go to approval of the minutes. The minutes have been prepared. Our pre-commission meeting minutes of August the 18th and regular commission meeting of August the 18th. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve both sets of minutes? Got, got a, got a motion. And second, if, is, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, both sets of minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda are reports from outstanding committees. And first is Operations and Finance Committee. That report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on August the 25th and took the following actions. We approved the following an agreement with evidence-based associates for services to the juvenile court for a maximum of $361,872 using the juvenile justice incentive grant funds. The committee approved the establishment of four CARES Act sub recipient grants fund in the amount of $1 million each for the following purposes: homelessness support, feeding of the vulnerable, school board initiatives, and support for local small businesses. The committee approved a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation to accept CARES Act funding for the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount of $1,63,495. And the Finance Director gave a monthly report on the financials of Macon Bibb County. This concludes the report of the Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next is Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on August 25th, 2020 and took following actions. The committee approved the following appointments. Steven Adams and Sidney Solomon to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board. Billy Pitts to the Macon Bibb County Board of Tax Assessors. The committee approved amending Chapter Four to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. until midnight. And the committee heard a report on confiscated funds in the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. There's no report from the Public Safety Committee, although every day is public safety appreciation day, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to say, I appreciate the proclamation you just read about public safety for this Sunday, and I hope everybody will thank our public safety workers that have done such a wonderful job right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and there was no report from Facilities and Engineering Committee. Is that right, Chairman Jones? Right. All right, sir. There are no public comments on agenda items as we go forward. So we will proceed with the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of four applications for alcoholic beverages. Each of these applications is accompanied by all of the requisite paperwork, which consists of a certification from the sheriff of a satisfactory background check of the applicant, a certification from the Business Development Services Office that the appropriate license fees have been tendered for the type of alcoholic beverages to be served, a certificate from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the, the location complies with zoning requirements, a certification from the county engineer that the location also meets all the distance separation requirements of our code, and a copy of the ad that ran in the paper. Each of these applications is accompanied by that documentation. And the first is by, I'm sorry, first application is by Riverside 2700 LLC located at 2700 Riverside Drive. It is an existing location with gas and alcohol sales currently. A change of ownership precipitates this new license application. It is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The second application is by Camu 51 LLC doing business is Quick Serve at 2260, I'm sorry, Quick Serve 2260 located at 2260 Sherrling Drive in Macon. Now that also is an existing location with gas and alcohol sales. It is a, a change of ownership that requires this license, new license application. The third application is by Nepal Incorporated doing business is 1313 One Stop Shop located at 1105 Gray Highway. That also is an existing convenience store with gas and alcohol sales. It's for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. And again, a change of ownership requires this application. The final application is from Vipool 3010 LLC doing business is Tom's Mart located at 3010 Houston Avenue. And that also is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The committee of the whole recommends approval of these four license applications. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those four licenses signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and those four licenses will be issued as requested. That takes us then to the old business item of our agenda. And the, the first item is a revision to our code of ethics, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Section 2-17 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances entitled Code of Ethics for the purpose of clarifying procedures with respect to the handling of ethic complaints against Macon Bibb County officials and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah. Um, I, I fully support this, and all of you know why. I've gone through the process, and it is not a fun situation to go through to finally have the eventual outcome to be, you know, there's no violation. Luckily, I had this sharp, top-notch team of attorneys from our legal department who were there in the court to defend me. But, um, and, and I'm joking there. Y'all supposed to, that's supposed to be funny. Y'all supposed to laugh at that. Anyway, they were a good group, and they did defend me. And the judge decided that there was no basis to the complaints. But I am real happy that we are looking at putting some more definition into this. I do think that in the future, we need to look at a fee for submitting these complaints because it does require additional work on the part of folks in municipal court. And there is an additional fee for a hearing officer if one is necessary. And so there are expenses that come with people filing these complaints. And the other thing that I would like to see, and in the future, I probably will propose, that there be some way of the person who is falsely accused being compensated for those faults and especially malicious, malicious attacks. And so, but today, I'm not going to offer any amendments. I'm just going to support it as written. And then later on, I think that we will see the need of doing those other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is, next is a resolution to make an appointment to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Steven H. Adams to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item C is an appointment to the Board of Tax Assessors, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Billy Pitts to the Macon Bibb County Board of Tax Assessors and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an appointment, a second appointment to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Sidney M. Solomon to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to slightly revise the hours of sale on Sundays of alcoholic beverages, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Chapter Four of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages by the package to go on Sundays from 11:00 a.m. until midnight and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, what?
Commissioner Winn, and then Commissioner Jones.
One small question. What was the, what were the hours before this resolution?
12, 12:30 p.m. until 11 o'clock p.m.
So this is extended.
It adds about an hour in the morning and about an hour in the evening, and kind of makes it uniform across the state.
Is that right? That's what the rest of the, the cities and counties have?
That's my impression of what they're all doing, yes. Commissioner Jones, did you have a comment or question? Well, you're muted. You unmute yourself, please, sir. There you go.
Question was, I was thinking this applied to, so, so this applies to on-premise accounts that are able to do this. This doesn't apply to packaged stores and other stores that are already off-premise accounts.
No, I think it does. Michael?
This is just the opposite. So we already have on-premise accounts with the brunch bill from 2018 where they can serve from 11:00 a.m. till midnight, and this matches the package stores, package stores, grocery stores, convenience stores, so that they're on the same hours as restaurants and hotels are, 11:00 a.m. till midnight.
Yeah, and, and that's what I thought it did. So that's, you confused me there initially, but I, I don't know that they want that, but perhaps they do. I've not heard that, but that means they're open seven days a week.
But, but my impression is you don't have to open.
If they want to be, if they want to be. But competition makes you do that.
It can. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Got two no's, Jones and Winn. I'm sorry, and Bibb. So, okay, so that's three. So we got six, six to three, the ayes have it. Well, I'm sorry, five to three, because, may pro tem, are you on the line?
I am, sir.
Good. Okay. So six to three, and the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance for services at the juvenile court, provision of services at the juvenile court, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Evidence-Based Associates LLC for services provided to the Macon Bibb County Juvenile Court for a maximum of $361,872 using the juvenile justice incentive grant funds and substantially the same form as attached here to as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. At next is an ordinance, which is one of four companion ordinances to, to appropriate up to a million dollars as the amended amount, up to a million dollars each for four purposes. And I'll ask the clerk to read the first of four by caption, please.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the Macon Bibb County Government to establish a homelessness support CARES Act sub recipient grant fund in the amount of up to a million dollars to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting local agencies that provide support for the currently homeless persons in Macon Bibb County that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval as amended to add up to a million dollars. Is there further discussion about the ordinance? We've got Commissioner Jones, then I've got Commissioner Allen, and then Commissioner Winn.
Yes, sir. I would ask that the sponsor give us his summary, reasons for the different categories, his thought process, and how he came up with the amounts. I think he asked, answered that last week. And then I'd ask for Julie to give us an opinion on, and then I'll have comments after I hear answers.
Commissioner Watkins, he's, he's basically asked, asked you first and then Julie.
So the purposes of, of the, the one that, this one is on homeless support, to provide support organizations like Loews and Fishes, Daybreak.
Atody.
And others who are home, home first, who are providing services to individuals who may be homeless, to provide them with different sorts of PPE to allow them to keep their facilities clean, those type of things. But also, I believe there's some opportunities for homeless prevention services as well. As I've been talking through the course of the week with just other partners as, as evictions begin, there's some opportunities there as well to provide aid to our citizens as they deal with COVID and not having money.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Jones, Julie Moore has left and is not available at this point. Do you have further questions?
Comments? My, you know, it's all for worthy causes. I don't, I don't question that. They're all well-intentioned. I, I question the amount as to how much is needed. There's not been a cost benefit analysis done as to what's needed where. For instance, the Board of Education, in my, in my view, does not need the money. That's one category. And I just don't think it's been well thought out enough. And I think we're premature as far as where it's going and what determines, what, what are the determining factors on what is spent where and how do we determine the equitable legitimate distribution of said funds?
Very good. Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a question I've got is two, two parts. Number one, how long do we have before that money has to be spent? Question number two, do we have mental illness in that part with that money that's being utilized? Because some of those people with COVID that's been kicked out of their homes, that's lost their homes, that's homeless now, are mentally ill. They need, they're going to need places to live, and we don't need them on the streets.
Right. My impression of what Julie said earlier, and I can be corrected, was that the money had to be spent by December the 31st. And if we're careful in the way that we craft the, the regulations for, we can be reimbursed hopefully out of these CARES Act funds that are coming down in Phase Two and maybe Phase Three.
So does this have to be done tonight, or can we wait until Julie gets back and we know the whole detail?
Well, I.
Julie, not Commissioner?
Right, right. We, 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 you, my, my impression is that this is the first, this is the first step of a number that will have to be taken to implement this. So I, I think this gives us a good start, and we can start working on the regulations and rules. But we still going to be waiting for the rules to come out for money from Phase Two and, and learn about that. Commissioner Winn, I've got you next, and then Michael wanted to make a comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I, I just had a concern about the thought process behind throwing out a million dollars here and a million dollars there. I know it's been changed to up to a million, but I didn't, because of the questions being asked already, I don't know, I don't know the thought process behind it. I know Commissioner Watkins has tried to explain that, but as we noted, that the Bibb County Board of Education is getting their own COVID funds, and I think some of these other groups, like some of the others are getting funds. And I just wonder if we have really thought about this. I'd really prefer to have a better discussion. And, and Julie is our financial expert, so yes, I'd like to have her comments, just like we asked for our attorneys to comment. I'd like, she's not a commissioner, but she's someone that has information and expertise and knowledge that would help us make these decisions. I'd rather have her talk to us again, because one commissioner has thrown out these, these amounts, these large amounts. And there is a possibility that we would not be reimbursed if something were put in wrong. And as if I'm not mistaken, if we are putting in some wrong information and we aren't supposed to get it, that they can withdraw any funding that they've given us already. It could, it could ruin the rest of our funding. I just, I'm just concerned about it. I'd rather have Julie, who's our financial expert, tell us a little bit more about the consequences that could happen or what needs to be done here. I'm not.
Well, hold on half a second. Let me go to, to our attorney, Michael McNeil. He had some comments, and then I'll go to you. May pro tem, I think that was you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to the question from Commissioner Allen about the timing. All four of these ordinances have a term in there that says that any money that, that is appropriated but not spent by December 31st becomes deappropriated by operation of law. And so that's, that's set up to coincide with the timing under the CARES Act, the Federal CARES Act, that says all the funding for the coronavirus relief fund has to be spent on or before December 30th. And so as soon as it hits December 31st, anything that's left in the pot under any of these four ordinances deappropriates as matter of law.
Now, may pro tem, I think that was you that, that were trying to make a comment. May pro tem?
I'll yield to the sponsor.
Okay. Commissioner Watkins?
So as it concerns our county and support for CARES Act, as we know, we received, we have the opportunity to be reimbursed, and we've applied as a county for a budget. As of right now, we've done $8 million worth of reimbursements on costs that we've already incurred. We've, we provided no outlets to our citizens who are business owners that desire some relief that is eligible funding. We provided no relief to food, for people with food needs, which is eligible funding. And so we're highlighting things that we can do and should do that we haven't done yet. And I, and I'm very serious about these items being things that I think we all want to do as a commission. We still need to put together the, the actual administrative arm of that, but that's not our job as commissioners. It's the mayor and his staff's job. If we want to support homeless, if we want to support small businesses, this is our opportunity to say that we want to do that. And that's what this is. It's not, it's not heavy on the detail because it doesn't need to be because we're not appropriating the funding. We're, that's for another day. So, but, are you?
Got Commissioner Jones again, and then Commissioner Winn again. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Again, the, all the intentions are good and good worthy causes, and we need to help everybody as much as we can. I think we're premature, and then we don't have guidelines from the state as far as these categories go. I guess you do.
Well, hold on, hold on. No back and forth. Commissioner Jones has the floor. Commissioner Jones?
I, I don't think we have clear guidelines from the state. If we don't get reimbursed and we spend the money, then it's coming out of the general fund, and then you could impact something like the pay, the pay scale increase. And I don't want to jeopardize that.
Commissioner Winn, got you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I, again, I don't know, the commissioners may make this decision as a whole, but I think because one commissioner offered something like this plan with no detail at the beginning. Now the details are starting to be laid out, but at the beginning, I think I'd like to hear more detail before. out, but at the beginning, I think I'd like to hear more detail before we actually vote this in, because I don't want us to make a mistake and go forward with spending this money. Is there someone out there that's laughing about what I'm saying? I don't think-
No, I think somebody's, I think somebody's, I think, no, I think somebody's trying to get my attention because they want to speak next.
I hope that's what it was. But nonetheless, I think that we need to think this a little further and then put the steps out there. Commissioner Watkins is laying out some steps now that weren't in there. But I, it's just like the Board of Education, they get some funding too on their own. So why should we put another up to a million dollars? This is, these are millions, and this is lots of money that you're talking about possibly spending. So I want to make sure we do it right, and we don't mess it up for us on the rest of the money that we can spend for our community.
Mr. Mayor- No, no. I, I've got Commissioner Lucas first, then I'll come to you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Lucas, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want us to remember that we in Macon Biv County have, what, roughly 155,000 residents? Is that, that's pretty close. We have a 27% poverty rate. Is that right? Commissioner, 27% poverty rate. The Meals on Wheels program has a backlog of elderly people who are waiting to get on the list to receive a meal every day. There are many, many foster children who fall under these different categories. There be twits and between in this whole process of being placed in, in homes. I could go on and on about the different groups that would benefit. But what, what our ordinances is that local agencies that are already falling under state and or federal guidelines would be ones eligible for providing additional services by receiving grants from these funds. And so, and I know that there's a time element. So I would just encourage us to go ahead. This has got to come back to us at some point with additional listings of guidelines and requirements from what I've heard today. So I think this is one step towards saying that we recognize that there are lots and lots of businesses that we could help to keep them from going under. That there are many, many folks in this community who don't have sufficient food, that there are senior citizens in this community, some of them that are related to us, who don't have what they need. A lot of this money could go to those agencies to help provide services. Now, we're fortunate, but there are so many others who are less fortunate. And with COVID, they're even farther down on their luck. So I would just encourage us to go ahead and approve these today, and then insist that the next time around, we get additional details, which I think the sponsor has said that he's gonna provide or that will have to be provided anyway. So I think that this is, it's past time for us to, to want more details. I don't know how many more details you need, other than all the folks that some of you complain about all the time that are homeless, that are chronically homeless. Some of this isn't, you've got some relatives and some constituents in your districts that don't have enough food. You've got some businesses that are about to go under that could benefit from some of these small business loans. I don't know what other information you need.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Allen, I think you were next, and then Commissioner Wynn, again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made a motion. We tabled this till Tuesday when we come back, and let's get, get sit down or whenever we come back to get this thing scraped. Right now, I don't think we, we know enough about what's going on. And I agree, I mean, I believe in what Commissioner Watkins is doing, but I don't think the commissioners know enough about what's going on themselves to, to make the judgment call that we have to make with our constituents. So I'm, you know, and I do-
Is there-
Wait, 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 before there's-
Is there a second to the motion to table?
We can't talk-
Our second.
Shepherd, Shepherd is the second to the motion to, to, to table. That's a non-debatable motion. So all in favor of tabling this until later time would vote yes. If you're opposed to tabling it and want to proceed with debate and final vote, you would vote no. I'm anticipating a, a, a vote that's hard for me to tell by voice vote, so I'm gonna ask the clerk to call, call, take a roll call vote, please, so I'll know what I'm doing. On the motion to, on the motion to table, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Tillman, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote? Commissioners, would you all please unmute so we can take a roll call vote?
No. No.
Commissioner Allen, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Slessinger, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Wynn, how do you vote?
Yes, to table.
Four to five.
It, it looks, it looks to me like we've got four yeses and five nos.
Yes, sir.
So the motion, the motion, the motion to table fails. So we're, we're back now to discussion in the main, the main motion. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Wynn, got you, and then Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just to respond to some other comments, and I want to respond directly to you. Some of the programs mentioned, like Meals on Wheels and foster care programs, I mean, those, we've talked about these being, having waiting lists for two years now. I don't think COVID has affected that in that great of a way. Those, those waiting lists have been there for two years that I've heard about since I've been here, and they'll be there forever, I'm afraid. Those are two very good programs, but I don't think that the money has been thought out about how we're going to use it, even for those three programs. But the other programs, the other things that now Commissioner Watkins is starting to lay out, I'd like to hear more about that. That's why I was in favor of tabling it just one week until next week, because I don't want to vote for something that we probably may not get reimbursed for. As far as the homelessness, there are people, and I used this comment last time, chronic homelessness means long-term, means that you are there because you want to be there in some cases. Some people don't want to get into the society and pay bills and do things like the rest of us. They want to remain homeless. That's chronic. We can't help chronic if people want to stay that way.
But one at a time, please. Commissioner Wynn has the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I wish you would, we, we could be more respectful to each other and not make comments while someone else is talking, please.
We're, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing our best. We're doing our best.
I just want the others to know that, because if you want to keep doing that, I'll do that to them.
No.
I want to say that this, this item, more discussion for the items that we don't really know what it's for. Education, explain that to me. They already have some funds coming to them. So there's one you need to explain. Small businesses, didn't they have loans that they could apply for? And we even had local loans to some of our small businesses. A group got together and did that. So, I mean, again, comments coming out, Mr. Mayor, I wish that we could just say the things we want to say without being interrupted. And I'll finish here.
Good. Commissioner Jones, got you next, sir.
Yes, sir. Again, the intent is sincere, and the needs are worthy, and I don't have a problem with that. It needs to be targeted. It needs to be specific. It needs to be more effective. And I think we'll get all of that if we have an analysis that Julie can look at it, fine-tune it, come back to us and give us direction as to where the specific needs are. Again, I don't think Board of Education needs it at all. And again, the intent is worthy and sincere, and I appreciate that. And I'm all for helping as many people as we can always, but it needs to be targeted. It needs to be effective. It needs to be specific. So for those reasons, I'm not in favor of voting for what we have on, on, on the table right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I understand. Commissioner Bivens had a comment. Commissioner Bivens?
Yeah, I just want to mention that I am again reminded of 1955.
Yes, sir.
All right. So thank you. Thank you very much. Is there further discussion?
The lack of empathy and compassion.
I tell you.
But I, I, I yield.
Okay. So-
That's not true, first of all.
No, no further, no further discussion.
You must apply that rule to all of us, please.
I'm trying very hard. I'm trying very hard. So no further discussion. I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll again, so we, we know what we're doing. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll if you're in favor of this ordinance as amended to say up to? You would vote yes, and if you're opposed to it, you would vote no. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Slessinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Wynn, how do you vote?
No.
Five, five, five yeses and four nos, so the ayes have it, and the ordinance as amended is adopted. Next is a companion ordinance that provides for feeding of the vulnerable, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Biv County Commission to authorize the Macon Biv County Government to establish a Feeding the Vulnerable CARES Act Subrecipient Grant Fund in the amount of up to $1 million to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting local agencies that provide food for elderly, disabled, and vulnerable persons in Macon Biv County that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, and Committee of the Whole made the amendment of up to. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Allen, got you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This thing keeps going back to COVID-19, and we do know that they've made some mistakes made on COVID-19. How are we going to recognize that the people that we helped with this money goes to individuals with COVID-19?
We're gonna, we're gonna try to follow the rules and regulations that are promulgated by the state and by this commission.
So you're telling me the commission's going to decide? Just forget it. Go ahead. Do what you want to. I don't care.
Right, right. No, no, you're right. The rules and regulations have got to be approved by the commission before the money can be appropriated and spent. I mean, what this does is create the fund and the rules and regulations for distribution of the funds of what the commission has yet to do. But at least this moves us in that direction. Is there, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Am I the only one? Am I the only one that's unmuted? Everybody's unmuted.
You know, we got a, we got a thumbs up button that we all get hit, or we can just say aye, you know?
All right, all right, all right. Opposed, say no.
No.
I hit, I hit, I hit three nos again, and so I'm going, four, four nos, so five, five to four. Five to four, the ayes have it, and the, and the ordinance as amended is adopted. Next, there's another companion ordinance. This one dealing with the school, schools, and I think, Michael, we amended it not just to the local Biv Board of Education, but to charter schools and private schools as well, I believe. That was an amendment that was passed, and I'll ask the clerk, however, to go ahead and read this by caption.
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the Macon Biv County Commission to authorize the Macon Biv County Government to establish a School Board Support CARES Act Subrecipient Grant Fund in the amount of up to $1 million to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting efforts to develop equitable remote learning capabilities to students and families in Macon Biv County that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Committee of the Whole recommends the amendment, again, of up to. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I was waving first, I think.
Commissioner Lucas, I'll let you go first and then-
Thank you, thank you. I need to get me a bell or something to you, Mr. Mayor. Let me remind you, when I was a counselor in the Biv school system, we routinely had large numbers of children who were classified as homeless but were also students in the Biv school system. I also have knowledge of the fact that there are a number of students who are enrolled in private schools who are on scholarship, whose families are not middle income or wealthy. But a large number of those students need a lot of resources. And what the school system, the Biv public school system does not handle, then there is a great need in this community to do some things for those other children. There's a hotel on Riverside Drive at Extended State that has large numbers of children. And some of those folks, a number of them are classified as, as homeless. And so I think that that should be enough for us to realize that this is something that we do need to support. And you don't have to believe me, you can just check with student support services and the social workers in the, in the school system and in these other educational facilities. So we need to support this.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Jones, I had you next, sir.
Yes, sir. Just, just to repeat, all, all for the intent, all for the worthiness of it. It just needs to be targeted and specific. And if it's not, then we do a disservice to everybody involved, because it's not as effective as it could be. And that's, that's the concern. This is thrown together, and an amount is thrown out there, even though it says up to. That little tweak helps a little bit, but it's still not, it's still not target-specific. And if it is, we could be much more beneficial to our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
I think I've, I think I've got four nos. Wynn, Shepherd, Jones, and Allen?
Correct.
Okay, the ayes have it, five, five to four again. And the ordinance as amended is adopted. Next is the, the last of the four sub-grants. This one for a local, local small business CARES Act Subrecipient Grant Fund, again amended up to a million dollars. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Biv County Commission to authorize the Macon Biv County Government to establish a local small business CARES Act Subrecipient Grant Fund in the amount of up to $1 million to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting local small businesses that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Committee of the Whole recommends approval of the amendment of up to. And is there further discussion on, on this, the local small business CARES Act Subrecipient Grant Fund? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, I think, I think I've got my same four nos. Commissioner Wynn, Commissioner Shepherd, Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner Allen. Anybody in addition to that? If not, the ayes have it, five to four. And the ordinance as amended is adopted. Next, we have a resol- resolution to accept some grant funds from the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Middle Georgia Regional Airport. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
Resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission to ratify and authorize the mayor to execute a Georgia Department of Transportation contract to accept CARES Act funding for the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount of $1,63,492 with no local match and for other lawful purposes.
in the amount of $1,63,492 with no local match and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted.
We voted for the airport, but not for people. That's, that's real.
That's, that was an extraneous, that was an extraneous comment. Please, 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 please refrain from extraneous comments.
Yes, sir. That is so refreshing.
Well, I guess we'll all start doing that then.
You've been doing that all the time.
So, you too.
Mr. Mayor.
I do the response to you. Mr. Mayor.
Is that Commissioner Jones trying to, uh, get my attention?
Yes, we still got item H up on the screen, so, uh, can we take that down?
I'm not sure. You may have frozen. It's not on my screen.
No, mine.
It's on mine, but anyway, my comment is, 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 uh, that was an unneeded unfair comment. I'm talking to you, Mr. Mayor, so.
I, I, I understand.
We all care about all four intents and, and, and needs of the community. And I think that's unanimous. We just wanted to be specific, just like and targeted and being analyzed, just like this one on the airport has been done. I can guarantee that amount didn't come out of the blue.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, may approach, may, may approach him. We, we, we're not, let me recognize, yeah, let me recognize you, uh, uh, for, basically, these are points of personal privilege that I'm allowing at this point.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so, you know, I, I just hope we can get back on track because, you know, what is really amazing to sit and listen, and I haven't said anything because I, I, you know, the thing is, most of federal money comes down is for the poor and the disadvantaged. And to sit and listen to the same folks continue to say the same thing, who have, Mr. Mayor, opposed your budget for the last two to three years, have not funded any public safety, public works, and nobody that works in Macon Biff government, but they still, sometimes you all show them so much respect, and they have not funded to pay for anything. And so as we continue to move forward, uh, and I guess this is the season of, of our last days, and it just really saddened me that it's going to come to this, that we at least try, we at least try to work, try and continue to move this community and our agendas forward, uh, that we want to see done, uh, within the next four months. And that is my goal and aim, uh, and I'm talking to you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you very much, Ma, Mayor Pro Town. Uh, I, I would admonish all of us to, to follow our rules and to exercise restraint, to, to speak only after you've been recognized and always address your comments to the chair, not have a, a kind of dialogue between, between commissioners and argument. But I just admonish all of us to do that because I, I just remind all of us, people are watching, then people are seeing. Uh, with that, Commissioner Allen, do you have a point of personal privilege, sir?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you know, I understand where the lieutenant, lieutenant, I understand where the mayor Pro Town is coming from. But I've been a commissioner a very long time, and we all have points that we might not agree with one another. If we all agreed, we'd be lying. So it is five to four. We asked the early question on that. We hold it to next week. Four of us wants to do that. We, we stuck by that. Five did not. I take that, I'm not mad about that. Other people are mad about that. But I felt, you know, I feel that be slapped at while they go with those comments. You know, let's get on with our business. I agree with, and there probably going to be some more that, that I vote against. But that is my right to do that, and it's not the right if somebody else just tell me it's not right.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Going on, uh, uh, to the last item, uh, uh, of, of, on the agenda, which is new business. Uh, let me read, we have a number of items to be taken up. But again, this list is not exhaustive. Additional, uh, items could come down from legal during the remaining portion of the week. But again, I'm going to remind you that it has to be turned in by noon on Friday because holiday is on Monday. And we'll have commission meetings beginning at nine o'clock on Tuesday, September the eighth, again by Zoom. Uh, so be prepared to meet virtually, uh, September the eighth, nine o'clock. But here's the new business thus far. Item A is a resolution making the appointment of Gregory C. Glover, uh, to the Arbor Conservation Board. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item B is a resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 209 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item C is a companion, um, resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire 201 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item D is another companion, uh, resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 183 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development. Uh, and finally, the last of those companion resolutions, resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain uh, to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 195 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, next is item F, a resolution approving a request for the installation of six streetlights in the Lake Arrowhead subdivision pursuant to Article 10 of Chapter 29 of the code to be paid from the Facilities Management Budget Service to Government Electricity Line Item. Uh, I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item G is a resolution, uh, approving a request for the installation of one, uh, streetlight at 400 Riverdale Road pursuant to Article 10, Chapter 29 of the code to be paid from Facilities Management Budget Services to Government Electricity Line Item. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item H is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of property to the Corporation of Mercy University totaling two one hundredths of an acre located at 1720 Dannenberg Avenue for its appraised value of $800. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Uh, item I is an ordinance to authorize a supplemental budget appropriation from fund balance to the Board of Elections in the amount of $259,264 in order to provide various costs relating to the conduct of the 2020 general election. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a work authorization with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood Incorporated, that's commonly known as GMC Incorporated, in the amount of $7,700 for the purpose of hiring Taffy Pippin Consulting Incorporated as a sub consultant for the preparation of an updated disadvantaged business enterprise plan for the Macon Downtown Airport and to accept federal funding in the amount of $6,930 and state funding in the amount of $385 toward the cost of the same with remaining costs payable from the airport budget. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a non-federal reimbursable agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $241,188.24 to be paid from the Middle Georgia Regional Airport runway 1432 Rehabilitation uh, project budget for the purpose of installing runway navigational aids. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Eberhart Industries Incorporated and Mead Road Environmental, II LLC in an amount not to exceed $8,750,000 for the purchase of land located at 4,300 Mead Road to be paid with 2018 SPOLOST funds, Walker Road Landfill Purchase Line Item. I'm going to refer that to the Committee of the Whole. Uh, item M is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between Macon Biff County and Warren Associates Incorporated for the amount $509,500 for Phase Three of the Freedom Park renovation going to be paid from 2018 SPOLOST bond proceeds. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. That is all of the new business that has come down to date. But again, please double check your agendas, uh, that'll come out on Friday afternoon before we leave for the long weekend, and we'll know what's coming up on the committee meetings, uh, next.
Local motive did make it?
Sir?
The locomotive?
The locomotive did not make it, but, uh, you know, i- i- if it comes down during, during the week, and I, I think they're working on that, uh, we can certainly a, add it to the, to the agenda next Tuesday, next Tuesday. Uh, is, is, is there any other point of personal privilege that I, I see, uh, Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to comment because of some things that happened at our meeting, Mr. Mayor, I want to say this directly to you, that, uh, you know, being attacked, first of all, people that know me, and there's a lot of people that know me, and this group doesn't really know me that well, even after two and a half years, no one's ever tried to get to know me. But I think that I'm a fiscal conservative, and when it comes to spending money for our community and within our community and our citizens' taxpayer dollars, I look at it very closely. I'm very serious about that and will always be. And may, and that may mean I disagree with you on some things you want to spend. I'm not a spend, spend, spend kind of person. I think that when we spend something, it needs to be planned and decided uh, with detail of how we're going to do it and where we're going to do it. But I don't appreciate the personal attack made as a public safety chairman that we aren't spending any money, we aren't having any resolutions. You know what, guys? If I had the money to spend, there's things we could do for this public safety. The number one thing would be hire a hundred new officers. But you, you haven't given us, you haven't given, the commission hasn't given that kind of money. So as public safety chairman, and I said this to a reporter yesterday, it's not up to me as an individual or even up to my committee of five to make this community better as far as the crime that's there. It's up to the community to do that. It takes the community to fight crime. And I, I don't like being attacked that we haven't done anything. And I think that same attack was made at the prior public safety chairman. Just be careful of what you say to people because you don't know what's behind it. And by the way, if you have a better thing, if you want something to be in a resolution and you have it, give it to me. I'll be happy to do it. But we need money, and that's what's behind all of this as far as our crime and our public safety in this community.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Are there any other, we've reached the end of our agenda. Are there any other points of public, uh, uh, personal privilege that, that a commissioner wants? Hearing none?
Labor Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. That's a wonderful note on which to end this meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.